Everyone, please stand and recede the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ashley, can I have roll call, please?
Cavalier?
Here.
Brecken?
Here.
Quat?
Here.
Hibma? Jerdy? Fisher?
Here.
Briggs?
Here.
Okay, we have one item on the regular agenda. Ashley, please.
Yes, Your Honor, item 3.01 is a resolution regarding the appointment of Joseph Chastel to fill the vacant at-large council member seats.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Thank you. Discussion. Anyone? Vote call, please.
Mr. Mayor, any public comment on the matter?
Any public comment regarding appointing of Joseph to consul at large? Anybody on the phone bridge regarding this, Keon?
There wasn't anything with that.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Cavalier?
Here. Call the vote to fill the seat, sir.
Okay, so, Ne?
Brecken?
Yes.
Quat?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Okay. Let's, uh, back to the drawing board. Where do we go from here, Jeff?
Mr. Mayor, there are several options available. The council can open deliberation for the same for another candidate that was in the pool. The council can defer action to the next regularly scheduled meeting on the sixteenth for reevaluation, or we can defer to a very costly measure of a special election, from my understanding.
Do we start the same format again? Would that be the easiest route, or what?
I mean, do we go with the next top? There is, there's three top vote getters.
There were, there were three, there were three top vote getters. The council can determine course of action at this point.
I mean, do we, do we vote with the remaining two that were there, or the remaining other candidates?
That would be up to the council. That is a viable option to move one way or the, one way or the other to move the question forward.
I make a motion that we, that we move to go with the remaining candidates and take a vote on them.
I'll second that. The recommended action would be to vote for a, a particular candidate, sir.
What?
The, the, the motion would be to, to make a motion to appoint a particular candidate, sir.
So, instead of like doing another round of votes?
Yes, sir. I believe, I believe at this point, the most appropriate would be of the, of the three that you had identified, the most appropriate motion would be to identify one of the three to make a motion to appoint that individual for a vote with debate among the council. The council agenda item is to appoint, so we can debate that topic at this meeting, at this special meeting.
Okay.
I would, in a way, prefer to have full council, or missing one council member. So, do we postpone it two weeks?
It, it is also an option to table the item until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Yes, sir.
Do you want to rescind your...
No, I, I, I leave my motion in place.
To?
To move with the next council members. We can do that tonight if, if...
What, do you want two?
What?
Remaining two?
Remaining two that were in the top three. So, it was, what's the other lady's name that I, it was Wendy and...
Gina, Gina was the other candidate?
Yeah. May I make my motion? We go with one of those two? Is that...
Again, the, the best practices would be to identify a candidate to avoid ambiguity.
Okay. So, do, do you want me to make a motion to pick a candidate?
Or two? Two? It would, the, the appropriate motion would be to make a motion to appoint person X to fill the vacancy.
I make a motion to appoint Wendy Al to fill the vacancy.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Delain, second by Don. Is there discussion?
I have a concern. We've run into a problem with council members not showing up and being voted, doing votes, and we end up shorthanded. I, I don't understand why we can't do it under a full council.
I mean, we can vote, and if it fails, it fails, and we can go to that option B. Got to have five anyhow to get them on the council, so...
And from a procedural standpoint, we have a motion and a second. The mayor has requested, if the individual wishes to rescind their motion, they have denied the procedure, parliamentary procedure at this juncture would be to move forward with the motion as made and seconded.
But do we know if, at this point, is Wendy even interested?
I can't speak to that, sir.
So, I'm going to appoint her, and she says nope.
Have to go on the next step?
Then we're back to...
It'd be best to table it, then?
Again, we have, we currently have a motion and a second, which, which needs conciliation prior to moving forward.
Let's move forward. Start voting.
So, fine, I'll, I'll table it. I rescind my, I rescind, and we'll wait, I guess, until the next council meeting to, we have a special council meeting to, to...
That would be the appropriate, that would, if this motion is tabled, then if the, if this question is tabled, that would be the appropriate, is to have it either at the next scheduled meeting or at a, at a special meeting in order to reassess the question.
You're going to rescind the second, Don?
Sure.
Yes.
So, can we, special council meeting a week from today?
So, are we tabling the resolution?
We can ta, we can ta, we can table the resolution until the special meeting, in which case it can be readdressed at any...
I think that would be most appropriate.
And that would, do we have a motion to table?
I will make the motion.
Motion by Christie.
Or all second, whatever.
Second by Don. Table the next special council meeting. Do you want to set that for next Monday?
Sure.
Sixteenth?
It's in the ninth, sir.
Ninth? Okay.
I, I cannot make next Monday night.
We're two weeks out.
Sixteenth?
Unless you want to do it later this week.
I mean, is there any rush at this point? I mean, if you just do the same thing we did tonight, next council meeting, it doesn't seem like there's a rush to really...
Nope. Friday would be the next date available, based on notice requirements.
Friday ain't going to work for a lot of people.
So, I have a five fifteen, special council meeting on the sixteenth, right before the meeting.
Okay, so it'll be scheduled two weeks.
Yeah.
On the sixth, sixteenth. Five fifteen.
Second that motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We need to call the vote, please.
Would she, sir?
I will go through that.
I was first.
Let me make an extra set of boxes.
Can you also put on our calendar, five fifteen, and not five thirty for the meeting? I mean, on the calendar request that was sent out to us.
Okay. Cavalier?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Quat?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries to table this until our next council meeting.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth at five fifteen. We'll have a special agenda.
Hey, Ashley, can you put five fifteen on the next city council meeting, too, please? Thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Okay, can I have roll call, Ashley?
Are you gonna go by the agenda? Let everybody know that is watching about the agenda. Cavalier?
Here.
Brecken?
Here.
Lot?
Here.
Hibma? Jordy?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Briggs?
Here.
Okay, it's time for the Crookston Forum. Anyone who would like to reopen for them, anyone who would like to address console, any issue not already on tonight's agenda, may come to the podium, stage first, last name and address, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Prior to moving forward, just as a matter of public service, I'd like to announce for anyone who may be watching that missed the beginning, the oath of office has been postponed for further deliberation on the meeting at the 16th from the previous special meeting, and also I would like to identify to the council, at the last special meeting, there was a question brought for pool repairs, and since that meeting, I've had several residents from Crookston reach out in support of maintaining pool operations and restoring operations. I've had a meeting with the Fin and Fit group, who have pledged some of money towards the needed repairs. I've also been reached out to by the owner of Happy Joe's Pizza, and they have expressed an interest in completing, giving a donation to assist in making the repairs to the pool. And so it would be up to a council member at this juncture to request in addition to the agenda for that deliberation or discussion.
May I make that motion, Your Honor?
Thank you, Clayton.
You're adding to add to the agenda item, because there's a policy and procedure to that, if that is what you're asking.
I don't think we can add it tonight. Correct? We can have a discussion for later, or not, but still would have to have council approval down the road.
It would, in a sense of, for a sense of time, if we can have discussion and a consensus to move forward, if the council were deemed to move in that direction, that would expedite the time to allow the pool to be repaired and reopened, without undue delay.
Could we have that discussion after the regular agenda?
Yes, sir.
Ashley.
Again, this is when you ask for an item to be brought up. Does anyone wish to bring up anything added on to tonight's agenda? Again, this is currently right now in the oath of office, so...
Yes. So in...
It's still the Crookston Forum, so public speaking.
So, in item five, would be the appropriate time. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley. All right, Carol, please.
So may I address this issue?
Yes.
I live at 908 Thorndale in Crookston, Ward Two. I'm here on behalf of Fin and Fit Crookston, whose members have worked hundreds of hours on fundraising and firewalking to keep the pool open, whose members have all walked the streets of Crookston, talking with more than 200 residents, who signed petitions testifying to support for the pool, and also the 1,100 responders who made their wishes known in an online petition. The number nearly 200 individual donations and multiple cash donations as evidence that the pool is very important to our city. On behalf of all these, and including two significant anonymous donations, to pay for that part, we thank sincerely. I am pleased to present a check for $10,500 to the city toward the current repair costs. Please open the paper.
Matt Rossu, 200 Gulf Terrace Drive. Thank you, Fin and Fit, for everything that you do for this community. I got two things I want to talk about. One's about the pool, but the other's about what happened before this meeting, but it's just a... Friends and neighbors of Crookston, we place our trust in those we elect to represent us. That trust is built on a cornerstone of integrity in our local politics. Integrity means more than just following the rules. It means acting with honesty, transparency, and genuine commitment to the well-being of our entire community. What I saw earlier was anything but. You guys set the rules to pick your own new at-large member, and then you just pull out the rug. Willy-nilly. Just like that. It's about making decisions based on what's best for Crookston, not personal gain or special interests. It's about being open and accountable to the people you serve, ensuring that our processes are fair and our decisions are understood. Integrity fosters confidence. It allows us to believe that our local government is working for us, and that our voices are heard, and that our tax dollars are being used responsibly. It creates a community where we can have respectful dialogue, even when we disagree. Let us demand integrity from our local leaders. Let us encourage and support those who act with principle and put the needs of Crookston first. Because when integrity guides our local politics, it strengthens our community for everyone. I'm also here today as a concerned resident to strongly advocate for the future of our community pool. Despite the challenges presented by the necessary repairs and the other repairs that I've heard about, I believe keeping our pool open is vital investment in Crookston. Our community pool is much more than just a place to swim. It's a cornerstone of our summer, offering our children a safe and healthy outlet for recreation. It's where families connect and where vital swimming skills are learned. It provides accessible exercise for residents of all ages, contributing to a healthy Crookston. The prospect of these repairs can seem daunting, but the alternative...
Pardon me, Matt. The gentleman's time has expired unless granted an extension by the chair.
Point of order, the Crookston Forum is 15 minutes, and is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Continue.
Thank you. The prospect of these repairs can seem daunting, but the alternative, a summer without our pool, is far more detrimental to our community's spirit and well-being. To address the financial needs of these crucial repairs, I propose that the council seriously consider establishing a dedicated funding source through either a special sales tax within Crookston or a special tax on services offered here. I believe our community understands the value of this asset and would be willing to support a dedicated, manageable tax that ensures its long-term operation. By creating a specific funding mechanism, we can protect the pool's future and avoid placing the burden on existing general funds, which you guys are very worried about. Let's work together to find a solution that prioritizes our community needs. Let's ensure that our children have a safe place to play and our residents have access to this vital recreational resource. I urge the council to explore these dedicated funding options and commit to keeping the Crookston Community Pool open and thriving. We have a deep, rich history with this pool. Let's be proud of it and move forward so that my kids and hopefully their kids and whoever's kids and people of all ages can be there. Let's not have it be another empty building here near downtown. I'll yield my time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody on the phone, Bridge? Keon?
Nobody on the phone, Bridge, Your Honor.
Thank you. Let's get in there. Okay, let me hear the dings. Okay, this brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to add anything to tonight's agenda?
That's when you can add.
We can add discussion regarding... What was your topic there, Jeff? Oh, regarding the pool finances, the fix?
Residents, we've had the Fit and Fin group, as identified by Ms. Gregg, as well as local business owner, have identified they would like to contribute to support the repairs currently needed. However, it is a discussion of the council to bring that forward to discuss. If any council member wishes to...
I'll make a motion for that.
Motion by Derek. Second by Christie. Further discussion? Roll call on that?
Yeah, because this is part of the agenda. They're also approving the agenda. Is that okay?
Okay.
Yep.
All right, hearing none. Let's have roll call, please.
Cavalier?
Here.
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Lot?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton. Do I have a second? Second by Henry. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Lot?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This brings the regular agenda. Ashley, please.
Yes, Your Honor, item 7.01 is the second and final reading of an ordinance for the regulations of cannabis business in the city of Crookston. We haven't, we have not had an motion.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Don. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Henry. Thank you. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this ordinance is unchanged from the previous reading, and it is simply a move forward to bring us into compliance with state regulations as the state finalizes their rulemaking. I spoke with Tanner earlier today on this matter. It is a draft that is being used that his firm has drafted for both us and other municipalities under their purview. The recommendation from staff is approval.
So, question. I mean, this is a state law, right?
Yes, sir.
So there's nothing that we can do, I mean, if we don't approve this, there's nothing we can do to stop it from happening in Crookston, correct?
If we do not have an ordinance identifying one specific item in the ordinance that sets out the appropriate zoning for any licensed operation, if we do not have that in place, then any zoning in the city would likely, not an attorney, I will defer to Tanner on final determination on that, but would likely, we would be open to being forced to allow it in any zoning area within the city where a business is allowed. We've, within this ordinance, we've identified with the setback requirements from schools parks, with the state, the commercial corridors along Highway Two on the North and Downtown District.
I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that the public is in the understanding that there's nothing we can do as a council to stop a business from opening up in Crookston, correct?
That is correct, sir.
I think this state law is...
This actually puts, this actually puts some boundaries on where they can have the...
Yes.
Story.
Yeah, the only, the only set is every county has a finite required number of licenses. If someone were to act prior to us, or if applications are submitted in other locales within Polk County, and the county reaches the minimum threshold, at that point, I will again defer to Tanner on the outcome on that. But by our population and the readings and my briefings with Tanner, we are obligated to issue at least one private license.
And then a while ago, I know you and I talked about it, you were gonna investigate a business plan and a return on investment on a city owned. Is that something that we're gonna see in the near future?
That is, that is still under, that is still under development.
Okay.
I've reached out to a few places, one being Thief River Falls, who did look into that. My information was that they had a full study done, and I was hoping to piggyback from that. They're fairly similar to us. However, they did not have a full study done when I called their economic development director. So I'm still reaching out and gathering information so that I can provide the most comprehensive information on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Can I have roll call, please?
Cavalier?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Lot?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 7.02 is a resolution authorizing the city of Crookston, Minnesota, to apply for the Greater Minnesota Housing Infrastructure Grant and commit matching funds, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I have a motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Don. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christie, discussion.
Mayor, members of the council, as mentioned, this is a grant, the only concern would be, and I know that EDA has a strong track record of finding other sources of funds to match grants. However, it is, I'm obligated to inform that this grant does have a $500,000 match. However, again, I see Carrie in the audience, so I would defer to, I know they have a strong track record of finding matching grants for the match. So that, my only concern would be the source of funds for that half million.
So, how soon do we have to commit? I mean, this motion right now commits, if it passes, it's...
For the grant application, I don't know.
That would depend on which way the box was checked in the application, and I will defer to Carrie.
Yeah, I can answer that, Delaine. The grant is due on the 12th of June. This is a, I'm asking for the approval to apply for it. It is a five, up to $500,000 grant. We're looking at doing the Casey's property, three and a half acres behind Casey's. It would, we're looking at 15 houses back there, so this infrastructure will put in road, water, sewer, curb, gutter, and all that type of stuff. If we don't do it, we still will be looking at that, but this is a one-time funding out there right now from Minnesota. So I'm asking to get that, and then I told Jeff we'll meet with him and Holly, Chuck, different people to look at, different ways to match that, whether it's through TIF or through bonding or through assessments, so we can kind of look at that. And if Jeff doesn't feel good on the end of that, then we can just not apply for it, we can withdraw the application and not apply.
No, I'm just, I mean, this is a good, this is a good deal. I just, I just worry at the, I don't want to be put in a situation where we get the cart before the horse again. And we, the city just doesn't, I mean, you've seen it with the pool and everything, we're in a natural, we're in tough shape. So I just want to make sure that if we go forward, which I hope we can, that we just have the money to get it done. I mean, I don't want to get into a situation where we get going and then, because that's, I mean, then we don't get these things down the road, right, if we, if we back out at a certain point?
Right, yes, correct. But, Delaine, the number one thing that you guys have been pushing on for as a council is housing and childcare. This is just an opportunity to put infrastructure in. And there are different, we'll have to pull together the mechanisms on that, and then if we all feel comfortable with it. But if you guys don't want to, then I'll pull that whole case, you know what I'm saying?
No, I want to. I just want to make sure we're working together as a council and the economic development and try everything we can to find this money to make sure we have it, so we don't have to, you know, do whatever, you know, so...
And that, this project would come for, it would go in in June, we'd hear probably in the fall, but we wouldn't be looking at this till next year, it would not come.
So is it possible, then, that we could commit to it and then budget for it for 2026?
The, it would depend, again, I would, I would say Carrie's team is very good at finding other grants that can make, that can possibly meet our match capacity.
So the question I have is, is after you do what you do, and it gets to a point when we're still in our budgeting process for 2026, that you would come to Jeff and say, okay, we got this, but we need to, we need to try to budget for this to come up with the rest, or something?
Yes, yes, of course. And also Jeff has asked me to, you know, if we have to put something over there, he's asked me to also look to see what we can do to offset other costs from other departments. So we've been working on that as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
This is also, I just wanted to say...
Can I share the joy a little bit? We, we got the $2.7 million included in the transportation budget. So if the, if they pass the budget down there, we are funded for $2.7 million for that Highway Two corridor project to gap our funds. If, so just encourage everybody at St. Paul to pass their budget. And also just today, I heard we rewarded $150,000 for the Housing Trust Fund, which we had applied for. That just came, just came in the email for that. So we're seeing some really good things lining up, but this is still a concern to continue to bring money in to offset.
Yep. And the concern that's still looming, and I don't know if there's been a resolution or anything else, any updates about the LGA shortfall?
There have not been any updates that I've, I checked this morning with Stephen, he hadn't heard anything. They're not in session.
Okay.
Right now, yet. They are anticipating a special session, that's when that'll be ironed out. We don't, obviously, in the case of our $2.7, they have, there are committees meeting, but they're not officially in session, so decisions are being made, we're just not privy to them.
Right.
Yeah, Representative Kegel got ahold of me right after they got out of that session, and there was two things that we were lobbying down there. One is the Empowering Small Minnesota Communities Grant, which we were the pioneer project for. That was funded, she sent out a press release saying that that was funded in the transportation bill. She also let me know that the other one was also, that our $2.7 million was intact, so I want to thank Representative Gander and Senator Johnson, because they also carried that, it was a kind of bipartisan effort on that, so it's good to see Minnesotans working together on that part.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to give you guys a timeline, too. So this is just the application part. Once the grant, the grant were to be, the council has to accept the grant, so there's still another opportunity, so that if it is, this is just the application.
I just, you know, in the past, we don't, we didn't seem to really have a discussion on, we got it, and we applied, and we got it. What were the rest of the money that's come, so I'm glad we're having this discussion now.
So I think the other nuance of that thing that we need to address is when she initially got on that with the other matching one, the funding was confirmed by the finance department at that point, that that funding was there, so I want to just clarify, it's not like she asked you to do something that wasn't available as per the Director of Finance.
Then we had an audit after that, and...
Yeah, I understand that, I'm just saying that like...
And stuff got worse with our finances, so that's...
No, I totally get that. I just want to clarify that she was under the impression, as we all were, that the funding was available at the time when she had applied for.
I get it, thanks.
Yeah, the council, when you guys approved it, you thought there was the same month that I thought.
Yep.
Just clarify that, that wasn't like just off...
If you ever want me to quit applying for grants, you let me know.
Carrie, I think, do what you do, but let's, I think this discussion is great, I mean, say...
I love it, Delaine, absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm excited, you guys, I'm excited for what's happening in Crookston, and I'm excited for the projects and see what we can do, and we've had some good wins, so hopefully we can do that for all of the...
Carrie, when is this grant, when are they opening these grant applications? Fall?
Yeah, we'll probably hear about it in the fall, but then it would have, like, the whole project coming together wouldn't be till 26.
I get that, but when are they, when would they all know if we get it or not? Is that fall, or...
Yeah, we should hear, well, if we go in June, we should hear like September, October.
Okay.
Yep, so, we'll plan to continue like what Jeff said, we'll plan to continue to look for matching grants and other fundings. Minnesota's really pushing hard, everybody's hurting for houses right now, so they're doing everything they can to get the money out. So maybe something federally will open, this is a state... Possibly looking at federalness to it, just depends on what the federal government does, and right now, the federal government has put a pause on everything, we don't have a clue.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I will be out, you guys, I will be out from June 12th for six to eight weeks with knee surgery, so I'm trying to wind everything up on it, so, thank you guys for everything.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Cavalier?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Lot?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 7.03 is discussion regarding the Crookston Community Pool repairs.
Okay, there was another glitch besides the 6,400.
Yes, Mayor. The PVC piping, the Schedule 80 piping, comes off the main circulation pump near the filters. It's been identified that there are no supporting brackets that were installed to the piping when it was originally installed, some 15, 18, taking a guess as to the year, 15 or 18 years ago. And the vibrations and the water hammer, the water hitting the vacant pipes has cracked a flange connection on the backwash side. The estimation, and that is included in the amounts that we discussed earlier, that the business owner and Fit and Fin have graciously offered. $2,495 for the flange and pipe repair, and another roughly $1,295 to repair and install pipe hangers to prevent future occurrences of any Schedule 80 cracks.
What's the total tally with the expenses, minus the donations and possible donations that we're receiving, what's the...
Based on what I've heard from Ms. Gregg earlier, the donation will cover, we're looking at $10,170 for the three sets.
Okay.
So from what Ms. Gregg had identified, it appears that that would cover the cost of these repairs.
So, no, no city dollars coming out for the repairs?
No additional city dollars would come out for the repairs.
I mean, can we move forward with the repairs then, tonight?
We can instruct, first thing in the morning, we can instruct to move forward.
May I officially vote on that?
No, I need consensus.
And then we have to vote for a resolution next meeting.
If I have a consensus, I can make an administrative determination based on anticipated outcome, and I can instruct my department heading forward.
With the consensus of no city dollars being spent, I mean, it's...
I think that there's also a crucial need to make that decision now, considering swim lessons and Club Kid also start and rely on the pool. And so that's also a loss of revenue on top of, we're not able to do this sooner than later.
Well, I mean, I get it, and we all knew we were going to be in this position this year. I mean, we talked about it last when we put it on the 2025 agenda, and I committed to my constituents that I, I agreed to put it on their budget for the 2025, but I said, we're probably going to be here in March because we're going to be over our budget, and that's where we are, so I, I mean, I'm in a position now that I won't commit any more city dollars.
No, I get that, Delaine, that's not what I was saying. I was saying, I think we need to have this move forward right now, because of those two things that are happening.
I agree.
And a consensus would not be, we would need to have a motion and a second and a vote on it, since it was not passed at the last, so we need to make sure that it's done properly.
So, we can make a motion tonight, then, right?
So is that, you mean, a special session, a special meeting, then?
Well, it would be a motion, you can always make a motion and a second to be able to move forward and a roll call on an item. We just need to have, because a consensus doesn't...
Okay, I will, I will make that motion.
So to take the donation, so again, to take the donation and move forward with opening the pool with the repairs.
Motion.
And the amount of, do we have an amount that you need to know to open it?
$10,170.
So we got a motion.
$170, is that correct?
Motion by Christie, and second?
I'll second.
Second by Derek.
And again, I just want to confirm, it's paid by all donation dollars?
Yes, sir.
Further discussion?
So again, this is a motion, what's on the table is to accept the donation.
So again, this is a motion, what's on the table is to accept the donation from Fin and Fit, and the amount was $10,500, and be able to do the repairs in the amount of $10,170 to open the pool. That is the motion on by Chris, Councilmember Jordy, and second by Councilmember...
Brecken.
Brecken. Roll call, Your Honor?
Please.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Clot?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, reports, Jeff, anything, please?
No further items, members of council, you have my written report. Any, I am available to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Don, anything tonight?
Your Honor.
Thank you. Derek?
Um, I'd just like to say that we, I'm happy that we came to a resolution regarding the pool. It's, it's a lot bigger than just the pool, the families that would have the ability to go to Grand Forks for swimming lessons, if, if we didn't open the pool, would then trickle down to going out to eat in Kirkston, or going to stores in Kirkston after the swimming lesson, so I think it's a good thing. And then I'm still kind of confused about what happened with appointing Jeff tonight?
Joseph.
Joseph, sorry. We, as a council, came together, and that, that was our, our choice at the last, last meeting, and I think what happened tonight was very unprofessional and very, I, I don't, I still don't comprehend what went on, and it makes us look really silly, and I think that it's going to turn people away in the future from wanting to put their name in the hat if stuff like this happens. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Delaine?
Again, I want to reiterate that I am not a pool hater. This building is a money pit, and we, and I want a pool in Kirkston, and like some of the, a couple of the other council members, I think we should start to have discussions of what we do in the future, to start putting our money and efforts into something new and better, and until that happens, I mean, I don't know what more we can do. It's, 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 it's month after month, something else happens, and we continue to stick money into a building that is falling around, falling down around it, so that's just, that's my two cents, so thank you.
Thank you. Christie?
I would also like to say to the other point, and something that I continually asked for in the last couple of meetings, is that you have a powerful group of residents who want this pool, and I've asked that you give them a full-on quote of what exactly is needed to see if they have the opportunity and the power to raise the money that's necessary to continue on with this pool. I don't think that there's one solution to this, but if you have enough people, this is just another splash pad, this is just another castle park, the power in the people is so important key, and you need to give them the opportunity to try to do that. So, for what it's worth. Other than that, we had our Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities meeting, we're directors, and so we met this last week, and just to kind of give you some updates, nothing was mentioned about LGA, but what I had mentioned earlier about the concerns with the Builders Association trying to null and void zoning and housing policies across the state of Minnesota, has not gotten into the final housing bill, so that is a really good thing, but it could very possibly go into next session, but we're good, we're in a good place as of now. I also just want to reiterate my thanks to Representative Kegel, who is actually not our representative or remotely close to us, but actually St. Paul. And the fact that she wrote our bill and put us in the transportation bill is pretty unconventional and untraditional way of getting these funds, and this isn't to cover what we've already provided, this is to cover the 2.7 that was recently given to us in the last couple of months, that was for us to get through the Highway 2 corridor project. And so that's pretty significant for our city to have that much money to do that, and also hopefully takes off that burden from our city going forward. So I want to thank Representative Kegel, our representatives who actually helped carry it forward, and Senator Johnson and Gander, so, and I appreciate Carrie as well, going down and testifying at the Transportation Committee with me on that, but that's a pretty significant thing for us, so I'm really excited that, to see what our quarter two can look like. I think it's pretty significant for our downtown, and for the stores, and just for, and just the overall health of our downtown, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Henry?
I like, Delaine, don't hate the pool, wish we had a pool, wish we had a pool that was safe. We, we keep going, we don't know where to start, we don't know where, we have a report from two years ago, that Corky gave us, from an engineering company, that Jeff rebrought out a few months ago. It tells us what we need to fix, it tells us how much it's going to cost, and it cost us, this is from two years ago. They said immediate fixes that need to happen right now, and that we have not done, a thing about, would have cost us $65,000 to $100,000, and that was stuff that needed to happen then. I don't imagine they magically got fixed. The other stuff that he said should be done in three to five years, said would cost $900,000 to $1.2 million. And that was, he wants, he wanted a plan from, for three to five years, again, two years ago, it hasn't gotten better, and it hasn't gotten fixed, we haven't had the funds for it. All of that is just building. He wasn't able to even look at the mechanical where all of this money is going to, because it was flooded. He couldn't even get down there. Like, I'm not saying that we don't want a pool, that we don't want this stuff, there's evidence of, he says there's evidence of things falling off of the roof, off of, inside of the pool, there's evidence of stuff falling off right in front of the entryway. Like, I mean, I'm not hating, like, I want this pool, but we would have to make an incredible investment in this. It would have to be a huge thing, and we have this report, it was in, when Corky put it out, it was here for people to pick up and read, so I mean, at this point, we're not just liable if someone gets hurt from something in this report, we're negligent. And insurance companies will seize on that, to not pay. So I'm just saying, this isn't just, oh, we keep throwing money, we keep throwing money, this is safety and what could really be bad for the city if something bad happens. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Clayton?
Well, as I stated earlier, I find that with council members being absent, I feel that things should be tabled, and far as, I agree with Derek on his Joseph, Joseph deal, it's very embarrassing. I'm sure he was here thinking that he was going to be appointed, and that was my understanding, that I didn't realize that we're there, going to be voting on it again, and I, I want to see something where, if there's a number of council members, that we start tabling things. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Regarding the pool, I know we're going to have a discussion, hopefully on, with, you know, Park Board, thinking outside the box, our next meeting, where do we go as far as, you know, try to find a solution, probably, you know, with our existing pool, and possibly a new pool down the road, and I mean, you know, to build a new facility to swim in, it's probably three to five years before you even put a shovel in the ground, but I hope, you know, that Park Board is thinking about it, open mind, thinking outside the box, see how we can move forward with this. Regarding with Christie on transportation bill, I don't know, can we get a letter out to Senator Kegel and our representatives? Thank you for the work they put in, it'd be much appreciated. Kind of just regarding Joseph not being appointed?
It's just a process.
I think it is mud on our face, hopefully we can do a better job in the future. That is all I'll say tonight. Anyway, we, just a reminder, there will be no ways and means meeting tonight, nothing else before a council, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.